Come this 5:30 meeting start, I got something else to do.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's March 19th Work Session. Ms. Anthony, please call the roll.
Board Member McKissick?
Here.
Board Member Orville?
Here.
Board Member Woods?
Here.
Board Member Love?
Here.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant?
Present.
You have eight board members present.
We have a quorum. Um, please... We have a quorum. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please remember to keep in your thoughts three students who recently passed away. Justin White, a 4th grade student at White Station Elementary. David Von Ponch... Von Chan, a 4th grade student at Georgian Hills Middle. And Tony Reed, a 10th grade student at Cordova. Let's keep their families in our deep thoughts.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to add the conversion of Raleigh-Egypt High School to... into middle school and high school. Um, merger of Hamilton Elementary and Hamilton Middle. And, uh, 1920 rezonings. And we're adding on the floor two HVAC projects related to the upgrades of Oak Haven Elementary and Maxine Smith. Uh, they are part of 2019, uh, money we received from County Commission.
I think that those items probably have already been uploaded to board docs. And so if there are no other amendments, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick? Board Member Orville?
Aye.
Board Member Woods? Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have seven votes in affirmative.
The agenda is approved. Uh, first we'll have the Chair's Report. I just wanted to, um, thank all of the staff over the three days that they did work last week for spring break. I know there was a lot of moving parts, um, thanks to, um, our staff as well as parents and family members. Um, hopefully everyone had a really good spring break and that we're now back and energized to do the work. Uh, I do want to make sure that, um, it is, uh, public that there are a few committee meetings tomorrow and Thursday. They should be listed on our website. Um, and this is just for choice options. One will be held at Whitehaven High School and the other will be held at...
One is held at Whitehaven and the other one will be held at Southwind High School.
At Southwind, okay. And these are just choice options for parents. We want to make sure that they're aware. They, um, begin at 5:30 at both of those schools. Um, and it just gives parents an opportunity to learn about different schools within the area and then our choice options and then as well as our optional school op... option. And then we know that soon we will also be talking about early registration dates. So we did discuss that a little bit today. So, parents, please be on the lookout when you get your reminder about registering for school. And I think our principals and administrators, uh, really do set a goal of making sure they can get as many students registered for the upcoming school year before the school year ends. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Wright for your report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, board members and all present and those listening to us on the Voices of SES. Uh, I do have quite a few items to share with you tonight. So you know about us adding items on the, um, agenda. So I wanted to share with Commissioner, that I shared with Commissioner of Education, um, Dr. Schwinn, our plan to include Hawkins Mill Elementary in the I-zone. In our, uh, ongoing effort to increase academic success, we created a plan of intensive support for Hawkins Mill, which, uh, highlight key three levers: leadership development, effective instruction, and student support. Uh, the financial investment we've committed to Hawkins Mill is also outlined in the plan that I've shared. These strategies will begin during the 1920 school year and continue over the course of the next few years. And Madam Chair, you mentioned, but I want to reiterate, registration will kick off this upcoming Monday. This upcoming Monday, March 25th, along with our Summer Learning Academy registration. Uh, I'm glad to share that this year's process is easier, uh, even better than we've had in the past for all returning students. Uh, they will only have to update their information in event that they have any changes. If students remaining in their assigned schools and there are no changes in their demographic data, they don't have to do anything. So that's a big change that we're going to definitely share with parents. We listen to our parents, so, uh, registration will be much easier and we'll begin the, uh, announcements and parent notifications, uh, this week. I would like to share that I forwarded you, uh, email last night about the communities and schools of Memphis seeding success in whole school strategies. Uh, we received a $1 million grant. Um, that should be applauded. That's great news. Uh, through the Together for Students Initiative, uh, we've been very intentional about our work uh, around social emotional learning, health services, uh, and increased access to arts program, early childhood, family engagement, and awareness. Uh, over the years, we've worked to grow and support efforts to meet each student where they are and provide equity in the classroom and create strategies to help support and develop the whole child. Uh, this grant will allow us to create a more comprehensive approach and we'll begin sharing more details at the April Community Engagement Committee Meeting. Thanks to our partners for all their hard work and support and thank you to the board because you set the vision for us and supported us through this very, very important work. And some great news, gonna wait for Ms. Powers to get up because I want to share this. Uh, we had the pleasure of joining, uh, our own James Wiseman from Gateway, who won the Gateway SES student at East High School. He was the Gatorade Player of the Year. If you noticed, I want to go back to the other picture. Yeah, that picture. I didn't feel comfortable with James looking down on me. I had to, I had, I had to stand up to James. I was, uh, very glad to be able to shake hands with and congratulate, uh, our superstar young athlete. He is now part of the, uh, elite prep athletes who have gone on to become icons in their sport. This is a big award. Uh, the 25, 25 past Gatorade National Players have turned into NBA first-round draft picks and MVPs. This is a great honor for East High, our district, and the state of Tennessee. So let's give James a round of applause. We will have him here, uh, at the board meeting next Tuesday. Uh, Tennessee Code Enintated requires that we give the identified charter schools 30 days notice about the possibility of revocation. As such, and in concert with the Legislative Committee of the Board, I'm directing staff to notify all the charter schools on the priority list that we will be bringing a revocation recommendation to the board in April. Uh, lastly, we'll be doing the monthly KPS presentation next week. But since the principal selection process is about to start in our district, I wanted to share an overview of how we go about choosing our principals. However, keep in mind that the process is specific to I-zone schools and that the process for traditional schools, uh, is a little different. Uh, as you know, the process occurs every year as we evaluate the needs of our students and schools and identify leaders who can champion the work in all of our communities. So I've asked Dr. Burke, uh, to give a brief selection process to you board, to the board, uh, how we make those decisions for our I-zone schools. Uh, this week we'll begin the announcement process, which includes, uh, collaboration between our academics face and Communications Department. So Dr. Burke, please share details.
Good evening, everyone. Just to highlight what the I-zone process entails, if we can go to the next slide. So one of the things to be reminded of, that when the I-zone was created, it was created in conjunction with the state forming the ASD. We know the ASD was formed to take over schools that fall in the bottom 5%. So the I-zone has an overarching mission to take the bottom 5% schools and reach the top 25% in a five-year period. With that being said, this year, we right-size the I-zone. I-zone has always had 23 schools over the course of the last two years. Some of those schools have been in the I-zone either seven years, six years, five years, four years. We have currently in Shelby County Schools, 18 SES priority schools and seven charter schools that's considered priority schools. So with that, 11 of the 18 have not received any intervention. We can go to the next slide. So this year, in order to right-size the I-zone, the 11 schools that went into the I-zone, the leaders went through a four-part interview process. They had to do data analysis, also instructional coaching role-playing, and they had to answer specific questions that's related to the turnaround competencies. During that process, they also had a presentation where they talked about what it would look like walking to the school that's in a stage zero status and focusing on turning around the school. Throughout the interview process, we always have to be reminded of the five key levers of school turnaround. Two key drivers: leaders must be well-equipped to focus on teaching and learning, also be able to build strong culture and climate, be able to withstand and align staff while implementing strong system and operations. And undergirding all five levers is having the ability to have strong personal leadership. So the leaders that were selected, basically rated and scored and performed the highest in conjunction with these five pillars. These are the competencies that, you know, we really look for, we weigh in. Driving for results, influencing for results, problem-solving, and having strong personal effectiveness throughout the process. And we must remember that all of the leaders that go into the I-zone will have a different type of support. There's an assistant soup, Dr. Thomas Rogers that oversees the day-to-day operation of the I-zone. There's a director of instructional support, three IODs, one from elementary, middle, and high, and also content coaches that support the schools in an intensive manner. Lastly, this slide shows what that makeup would look like next year. The schools that's emboldened will be the new schools that will roll into the I-zone. We know there are 13 schools that will roll out. All 13 schools that will be rolling out are schools that have received high success rates over a period of time and that success rate isn't in, isn't in any jeopardy of going back into the bottom 5% over the course of the next five years. Lastly, I want to emphasize that it's important for us with the right sizing because the state has emphasized a different accountability model in regard to leadership. We now have funding that's tied to priority schools that whereas a leader that walks into a priority schools is, is able to receive a financial incentive package, up to 15,000 for going to the school, then 12,000 additional dollars each year if their school scores a T-Bass 4 or 5. So a lot of these schools leaders will receive those packages, but it's contingent upon the 12,000 each following year if they maintain a T-Bass 4 or 5. At this time, any questions in regard to the I-zone selection process?
Ms. Love?
Thank you. So, um, I did want to touch on what Superintendent Ray spoke about. So I am glad that we're going to provide, uh, additional support for Hawkins Mill. Because I know I've been talking about that for a minute. I do, uh, want to spend some time at a later date to discuss the I-zone model because I know this is a model that the district created. And like I've stated before, um, because this was a model that the district created, um, if there are things in that model that are not conducive or maybe we need to change something in there, uh, what's the... How can we have that conversation to change it? And I say that because, uh, when we look at the I-zone and we look at, and I'm only speaking of my district, we're going to place a majority of the schools in my district in I-zone. I know that Tresman has been a part of I-zone, Grandview, Lucy Campbell, uh, Raleigh-Egypt. We're going to make, uh, Hawkins Mill and we're going to turn, uh, possibly Woodstock into an I-zone. So when we look at the model and we look at my entire district, there is no feeder pattern anywhere in my district where a parent can, or their child can attend an elementary, middle, or high school that's not on the priority list. So what I'm saying is I think it's time that we have a real conversation around District 3 as it relates to what actually needs to take place. We need a true community assessment plan to figure out what are the challenges in that district. I know I've stated a lot of times the feeder zone. Um, until we have principals, elementary talking to middle, talking to high school, talking to everybody, we're never going to get the results that we need. Um, we have pa... we have children that belong to the same family in elementary, middle, and high school. Um, and we're, that, that, I know, Dr. Ray, I know you said that the conversation is coming. Um, but as a parent who, I have a child in the 5th grade, I have a child in the 8th grade. I do not know in my district where I'm going to send my children because I know what my child needs. And it's not fair for me to have to send my child outside of my district so that my children can get what I feel that they need. So it's, it's, it's personal, but I know we have 100,000 other children that I'm speaking on behalf of. So when we talk about the I-zone model, thank you for including these schools in my district. Thank you for doing that, but we, we, we have to do something different. So I'm going to ask that we come up with a true community assessment plan where we lay all of the challenges that our elementary, middle, and high schools are having. We lay them on the table and we come up with a plan of how we're going to address... Okay, I'm almost finished. How, how we're going to address the academic success of all the children in District 3. You know, like I said, thank you for putting them in I-zone. I appreciate that, but it's, yeah. We, we, we need to do something different.
Thank you, Ms. Love. Uh, it goes back to the conversation around the footprint planning proposal. And I think it, we need to have a more robust conversation, not only about District 3, but, uh, all the districts, uh, what are we going to do, uh, with our academic inequity plan uh, to address all of those needs. So I do agree, Ms. Love. Thanks for pushing us around this work. And, uh, I know Dr. Burke and, and the team will be prepared. And the last thing, uh, last but not least, I want to introduce, uh, a new member who just started with us yesterday. I'm very proud to see her in the back, our new Deputy Chief of Communications, Ms. Jerica Phillips. So, Ms. Phillips, stand and wave. Welcome to Shelby County. She had her first committee meeting yesterday. And it was a great time, wasn't it? All right.
That, that's only one way to answer that question, right? All right, so now we're going to move on to... 7.1 Relay Graduate School of Education, the amount of $216,000.
7.1, that's provide 12 ish for the, uh, PD for the 12 instructional leadership directors.
Seeing no lights, 7.2 Learn Zillion Platform and Professional Development High School ELA Curriculum.
Um, student learning in all high school English, language, arts classes. Uh, this will take place, uh, for the 1920 school year.
Uh, Dr. Wright, so that means that the ELA that we approved, that doesn't scaffold up to the high school? So they're not using exvis... ex... EL, Exhibitionary and Learning, EL?
Right. So EL is K-8. A high school is always use a Learn Zillion platform.
7.3 Fund One Playground Installation Brownsville and Roselle Elementary Schools.
Uh, this to satisfy federal requirements for the district where playground equipment will be styled to prevent programmed deficiencies.
7.4, Ms. Love?
So this is for Head Start? Or is this the district?
Yes.
This is Head Start?
Yes.
This is part of them getting up the code on, uh, the remaining playgrounds. Uh, Mr. Lovelace, do you want to add any more context to that?
Good afternoon. Um, it's for Head Start, but it's shared playgrounds with Head Start and other funding sources that we have, so it will be shared dual enrollment with pre-K Head Start and, uh, pre-K programs that's funded through Fund One as well as PDG.
Okay, so it's pre-K and not Head Start?
It's pre-K.
Okay, because I'm, I, Roselle didn't have a Head Start classroom, so that's why I was questioning, so.
Oh, 7.3, Dr. Burke.
Okay, thank you. 7.4 Playground Installations Goodlett, Lawrence, Oak Haven, and Westside Elementary Schools.
What he says, playground, uh, new playground systems for those schools.
Is that same fund?
Same fund, Dr. Burke.
Oh, that's Head Start.
That's Head Start.
Okay.
We apologize, we had them mixed up.
Thank you. 7.5 Xanadu, I'm sorry, Ms. Love? Oh, that was for pass, okay. 7.5 Xanadu Printing Materials for High School ELA.
Uh, support our current ELA classes in the district, 1920 school year.
And this is printing we're doing outside of the district?
Dr. Burke?
Correct. So Learn Zillion is the platform, but we've used, uh, Xanadu, Xanadu to print the material from Learn Zillion with the actual licenses.
7.6 K-EL Education Materials.
Uh, currently we have, um, schools implement four modules of EL and we've received PD from EL Education, literacy advisors, and IOT members.
7.7 Trauma-Informed School Funds.
Um, this is the request approval for, um, one-time $12,000 grant under Title IV. The C Office would manage the funds, uh, and curriculum resource materials in the trauma-informed schools. Uh, Tennessee Department of Education selected 70 schools representing 43 school districts. Uh, 10 schools received 1,200 each, uh, for a total of $12,000. Those schools are Betha Grove, Hamilton Elementary, Lucy Elementary, Oak Haven Elementary, Ross Elementary, Cummings K-8, Douglas K-8, Lawrence K-8, Grandview Heights Middle School, and GW Carver High School.
Ms. Love?
Thank you. So my question on this is, um, so this, these funds will be used for, um, is this for them to create a plan of action or?
Dr. White, love.
Actually, it's in conjunction with Dr. Hargrave and the work that she's doing around trauma-informed schools. So we will continue to provide professional development in the schools based on the needs of that particular school. So the school will work in conjunction with Dr. Hargrave and her office, uh, really trying to make sure that the staff is aware of ACE's training and how that will have an impact on students.
Okay, so based on that, uh, we'll, okay, so I, I know that we're working on a district-wide plan. So based on that, the grant that they receive, so they, they're informed of trauma and then what, so how, how does the district, because I know that money is, you know, it's a small amount of money. So they're informed on trauma, everybody in the school has been trained, they're able to recognize it. So based on the plan that the district is creating, what happens after that? So they're able to respond to the trauma that, you know, that they see.
Asking, I was asking Dr. Hargrave.
Yeah, Dr. Hargrave.
Good evening. Uh, these are 10 of the schools that were, um, were approved by the state to start the first phase of becoming trauma-informed schools. So these are, these schools have all had staffed, the three-day staff training and, uh, for their team, and then their teams have gone back to start the process. This $1,200 is simply to provide additional supplies and materials as they work to transform their schools into a trauma-informed and responsive environment. So, uh, things like setting up the reset room and peace, uh, peace corners for students.
Okay, so I guess that these schools will be kind of like a pilot for the district to, to, to start off?
Dr. Hargrave.
So, yes, this is part of the group of the first 25 schools. So they're still working through just the awareness phase and moving into implementation.
Okay, so ba... based on that, that's why I'm asking, because I know that the district is working on a, on a, on a plan. I know that. Uh, so based on that, after they've, they've been trained, they understand, um, they're able to create, and I know like $1,200 is not going to create a whole lot. So based on that, will the administration be bringing forth recommendations based on what the school findings are? Will the administration bring forth recommendations of how we become responsive? Because I know that there are policies we have in place, there are practices that we have in place that, um, actually prevent schools from responding to the trauma.
So basically, Ms. Love, we will, we do have a plan for social emotional learning. And inside that, our strategy is to become an informed school district, to provide ACE's training as well as to, um, utilize Response to Intervention B to ensure that we have a benchmark. So we can share that plan to go more in detail of how we're planning on to identify students as well as provide support.
So, Ms. Love, we'll be sharing that plan next month. We're just happy to get this $12,000.
Right, we're, we're happy. So in closing, what I'll say is, this is, this is what I'm saying in closing. Um, they're trained, they understand. But I don't want to wait three, four months down the line until a plan is put in place so that they'll ac... you know, I, I want to be able to allow the schools to be able to respond to the trauma and address those issues as they come while the district is creating a plan of action for a responsive school district.
And also I would say, Ms. Love, um, that our task that we have this week is to show you how we're aligning all of our resources and our personnel to supporting those areas. And I know that was one of our assignments as well. So out of that, we will have a plan, how to identify the student, how to support the student, but how we're utilizing the resources that we have and the staff that we already have to ensure that we're meeting those needs. So we will have a full, comprehensive plan, uh, for the board on next month.
Okay, moving on to 7.8, the Division of Alternative Education Evening Reporting Center Contract.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. This is a program designed to reduce the rate of recidivism or reoffending juvenile, um, students. Uh, this Evening Reporting Center will provide structured, supervised, and group activities to cultivate participation, personal responsibility, pro-social skills for at-risk youth while diverting them from substance use and other destructive behaviors.
Okay, so is, uh, I'm sorry, is it pulled up what the contract amount is? It's not on my printout sheet. 308?
Dr. White, love. Dr. White Law?
Not to exceed $309,000.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Woods?
Mr. Superintendent, this is a contract between Shelby County Schools and Shelby County Government. This is a conversation we can take up during budget season, but I am a little perplexed that the fact that we received funding from Shelby County Government and that it has to be ADA and then you giving it back to them, that you probably can save about 30% by contracting out those services directly with Shelby County Government and not having them pay you only to pay them back. Because, and Mr. Johnson may want to opine on that now, or we can talk about it in the budget process, but I would be asking us to look at any contracts where we're paying Shelby County Government to provide a service when in essence, every dollar we receive from them, you're giving a percentage of it to our municipalities. And so is that a conversation that was had prior to us entering into this contract? Does that make sense, Lynn? Sir?
It does, Board Member Wood, Sam. What I can do is, I can follow up later on that.
And to be clear, Dr. Roy, I'm not opposing, supporting this, but again, I think that's a question that we should always ask if we're signing a contract and paying the entity that pays us, you're hereby probably paying a larger percentage instead of trying to figure out a way that they pull those dollars out of ADA and then provide those services directly.
And Board Member Wood, I just want to like follow back up in terms of the mechanics, whether they provide us with that full $309, and then we're like handing it back, but I, I don't want to speak on that.
Yeah, and to be clear, I understand we have multiple funding streams, but it all goes in one pot and pays back out. So unless this is tied to some federal requirement or some grant that we receive, in essence, you could, there may be other ways to enter into this financially. That's my point, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Love? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, listen up.
Apologies.
So I do have concerns about this as well as, as it relates to what is actually going to take place in the reporting center. And I know that the alternative school did brief me on this yesterday. And my concern was, is this just another place where we're going to house our children? Because I know this is an, I know that this is an alternative. Instead of them being reported, or instead of them being taken to juvenile court, this will be an evening reporting center
Right.
that the county government has asked Shelby County Schools to participate in. I did tell Mrs. Matthews that I did feel that this should have came through a committee to discuss because, you know, I understand all of everything that's going on, but I, I don't feel comfortable with this coming to us today and then the board voting on this next week without us knowing fully what's, what's actually going to take place. And even going back to, you know, the question that Board Member Wood stated. So I don't, I don't know if we can send this to a committee and then vote on it. Like, I don't, I don't know the timeline, but just looking at it and just reading briefly what's going to take place, I'm, I'm not comfortable with voting on this next week. I think that there needs to be a discussion, and if the county wants us to participate in this, someone from the county should also come and do a presentation and let us know exactly what's going to take place.
Point well taken, Ms. Love. We can pull it from the agenda, send it back to committee so we can get some of the questions answered and we can present it. Thank you.
So I just want to get, is that we're pulling this item with no objection from any board members? Because there's objection for us, then we just need to?
Yes, but I saw Ms. Matthews walk in. And Ms. Matthews, can you come up and speak to 7.8, the Evening Reporting Centers? Ms. Love mentioned that you did meet with her. However, can you talk about the funding streams and exactly what's the purpose of the Evening Reporting Centers?
Yes, sir. So good afternoon, first and foremost. The Shelby County Government actually reached out to the Division of Alternative Schools and Shelby County Schools to contract to operate an Evening Reporting Center. The purpose of the program would be to decrease the interactions that our students in Shelby County Schools actually have with a detention facility or being incarcerated for minor offenses that they would not actually be sentenced for a long term. So the program is designed to operate in the afternoons after school, during those peak hours when students would typically be involved in non-structured activities. So if the program operates from 3:30 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon until 8 o'clock PM, the programming, the programming of the program would be an academic component, a recreational component, course recovery, mentor-based program. So there's a lot of things that are structured in the program to just support students as an alternative to being incarcerated. The, it's, it's an actual contract, so they would be paying us in order to operate the program, paying for the staffing, the materials, supplies, and other things that would be needed.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews, for clarifying. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I'm familiar with the conversation about the program to prevent, obviously incarcerating these young men. I just wanted to make sure that it was not being funded through ADA.
That is correct, it is not.
So, Mr. Superintendent, that clearly answers my question, it is something that I plan to support. So that was my only concern, is that it was not ADA.
So with that, and thank you, Ms. Matthews, came right on time. With that being said, Ms. Love, could we maybe get a list of your questions and possibly answer your questions prior to the next board meeting? We can leave this item on the agenda.
Ms. Love?
That's fine, I think what I stated still stands. But I do have a question. Since this is coming from the county and they're going to pay us for it, does this mean that any student, I mean, any child between a certain age in Shelby County will be brought to our evening centers, the Evening Reporting Centers?
Yes, ma'am, juvenile, any student that is a juvenile, yes, ma'am. So it would only be students who are under the age of 18.
Okay, from the entire Shelby County?
Only from Shelby County Schools, no students outside of Shelby County because we would have to provide transportation for those students. So we will be picking those students up from their home school and transporting some of them to the Evening Reporting Center.
And this is coming from the county government?
That is correct.
Okay, so I have a problem with it.
Okay.
I, I have a problem with that. Because if we're talking about supporting all of the students in Shelby County, this just sounds like another, I mean, I'm not saying that we don't need an alternative to juvenile court, but I have a problem with singling out only Shelby County School students when we know we have an issue Shelby County-wide. So I'll, I'll send my questions in, and I look forward to having those questions answered. But only singling out Shelby County School students? I, I have an issue with that.
So I think it's a way, Ms. Love, to really help our students in Shelby County not to enter into the juvenile court system. I know Ms. Matthews has worked on this for quite some time, almost a year, just to try to work out the details, but, you know, we look at majority of the students within our school district, they're the ones that populate juvenile court and that's detained. So we tried to work harmoniously with the Shelby County Government and juvenile court to develop a, a plan and a system to where our students can receive services without being detained at juvenile court or shipped off throughout the state. So, but we do, Ms. Matthews, want to honor and respect Ms. Love's questions. Let's get them answered and see if we can move forward next week.
Yes, sir, more than happy to provide that data.
Item 7.9, the 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 Academic Calendars.
So thank you, Madam Chair. We're going to recommend Calendar B, I think it's uploaded. Of course, we did an unscientific survey of parents and teachers and students, school administrators and central office, and we're going to recommend Calendar B. So it's, it's a B, and there's a B-plus, we're recommending B.
So it's just B, not the B with flex days?
Just B, Calendar B.
And is that the start date of August 10th?
August 12th.
Okay, so when I'm looking at Board docs, Calendar B says start date of August 10th.
So are you looking, that's the 2021, we're doing two-year calendars? You need the 1920 school year.
Okay, they're, they're labeled, so they're both labeled, one is labeled flex day. I'm just, I'm going by what's labeled in Board docs so that it's not confusing for people. One says for the 1920, it says Calendar B with flex days. The 2021 says Calendar B. If they're both Calendar B, they just should be named Calendar B.
They're both a named Calendar B, am I correct?
They're not loaded that way in Board docs, so just so it's clear.
Okay, we get that corrected in Board docs.
And so calendar, I don't know, so, it's calendar, what's uploaded in Board docs says Calendar B with flex days, and it has, but it's probably calendar, it really is just Calendar B?
That's, that's correct, calendar.
Okay. I do, I see that, but one says calendars, one says flex days and one says none, so.
So we need to take off the flex days, it's Calendar B for 1920, Calendar B for 2021.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent, thank you for the recommendation, but I'm still going to state the same things that I said in committee around this calendar. I think I definitely have apprehension about saying yes to Calendar B without there being an actual plan around how we plan on handling these flex days. I think when we talked about B-plus, what was a true compromise between A and B was the fact that you actually had less half-days, but you still were also able to accommodate those teachers around professional development versus like definitely the feedback that I got from families was all about, well, what are we going to do with eight half-days?
Right. So Ms. Bibbs, we appreciate it, I think we have an answer to that, but let me opine on why we did select Calendar B. B-plus started on a Thursday. And in fact, if we're looking at student attendance, Thursday and Friday, starting school on Thursday, we find that our students are going to probably, will not come to school until the following Monday. So it will be, you know, and I really looked at B and B-plus. I went back and forth, and as a cabinet, we talked about it. And I know that our students entering school on a Thursday would, would, you know, be problematic for the first two days of school. So on those eight half-days, can you talk through, Dr. White Law, what are we doing as far as PD? Can you go into what partnerships we trying to form for those half-days? But also, you know, with our parents, because I've, I've probably talked to many parents out of the grocery stores and churches, and, you know, they all, I heard were very excited about B. And they all talked about how they voted and used our unscientific poll. So I've heard various things throughout the community, but we did want to specifically address the issue that you brought up in the committee. So I think Dr. White Law can, can talk through it.
Before she gives me her thoughts around what we're going to do on the half-days, I guess another concern I would have would be around even the presentation of B-plus, why did we put it out there that a school, that we would start school on a Thursday as an option? So I think just some of those things that I do think, you know, are issues around us making these types of decisions around what a calendar looks like.
So that's great feedback for the team, Ms. Bibbs. What we were trying to do is align and get, listening to the calendar committee trying to align the calendars, because many of our teachers stay outside of the area. And we were trying to match calendars with the municipalities, and they try to match theirs with ours. So many of them start school on a Thursday.
So they're, they're starting school on Thursday?
Some of them, yes, from my understanding. But there's no way we can start school on a Thursday. You know, we looked at the data, and we looked at the data on half-days as well. But we would, you know, basically, if you add the two days to the five days on B, you still have seven days that's going to impact our attendance. So that's why, as a team, we looked at it, and that's why we recommend B.
So Ms. Bibbs, after the last academic committee meeting, and we heard you all talk about and really push us around what we were going to do for our students. A couple of things that we reached out to, a couple of community partners, and they have offered to, offered that support. So definitely, we're going through the process of RFP, RFQ, but they can come into our schools and they will offer additional daycare services. There will be a fee. So also what we're doing, so that's one route. For parents who cannot afford that fee, what we're teaming with is family and community engagement that we will be providing for our parents throughout the semester, other organizations in the area, other churches who will be offering services probably at a fee that they may can afford. So two things, we have an organization that is already working with us and told us that they can come into our schools and help us to secure, to help us to make sure that our students are safe until the end of the day. The third option that we're also exploring and that we have put before the cabinet, we talked about offering enrichment right after. So again, not keeping students from 12:30 to 6:00, but hopefully helping with a gap from 12:30 to 4:00. So again, offering our TAs the opportunity to provide enrichment in our computer labs with whatever intervention that we may be using, as well as offering small group instruction. So again, going a couple of more hours, hoping that parents then can get there or team up with different parents throughout the neighborhood. So trying three options, again, with the organization that's going to be coming on board, asking for a fee. Second, working with our churches and community organizations to make sure that we alert parents early enough of what's being offered. And third, offering enrichment courses after school to hopefully forge a gap for our parents, that they can make sure that they pick up our students before 6:00.
Also, Dr. White Law, can you talk about the intercession during fall and spring? Quite frankly, our students who need remediation and also enrichment will receive a total of eight days during the intercession period between fall and, fall and spring break. So can you talk through that?
Yes, Superintendent. We will be offering, again, classes for our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students, and we will have parents to sign up, but we'll be offering classes from 8:00 in the morning to 4:00 in the afternoon. And we have already worked a plan, it would look like what we offer with our superintendent's Learning Academy. So we'll be having reading, math, and science.
Summer Learning Academy.
I'm sorry, Summer Learning Academy. That we'll be offering support around reading, math, and science during that time, as well as intervention using our computer-based programs. So they'll be doing fall break and spring break.
Also, half-days, they count as full days. So it's not like we get counted and deemed from the state.
Ms. Love?
Dr. Roy, could you provide the data on our half-day enrollment? And do it by middle, elementary, and high?
Yes, we can do that, and not only that, we'll provide the data around a two-day school week as well.
Okay, well, okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Ms. Love, is that it? Okay, like you had another question, just make sure we get it out on the first. Okay. Mr. Orgel?
So I, I got a bunch of emails on this subject. And our, our teachers and administrators work very hard, and I appreciate them. But the, the one thing I'm missing is, I thought, and maybe this is just old data, that we're supposed to be in school 180 days.
So I know the team can speak to it with the?
That's a yes or no, don't we, doesn't the state say you have to be in school 180 days?
So Reggie, Reggie, could you please answer the question?
Thank you, Superintendent and the board members. One of the things that we are able to do is ask special permission from Thank you Superintendent and the board members. One of the things that, um, we are able to do is ask special permission from the state if we're gonna utilize PD days for our teachers, so we can go one hundred and five, seventy-five days instead of the one hundred and eighty days. If we're going to align that work with the theory of action, of improving our teacher performance. So what we're gonna utilize those suggested five days for will be PD days to increase and build our teacher capacity.
So I think to get to Mr. Orgul's question.
I got it, I got it, yeah.
But I, I can, can.
The answer's no.
Well, the answer is really yes, uh, and Bill can explain the amount of time we have built in during a school day. We actually have a number of days already built in to our school day that I, I, sure. Okay.
Thank you. So in that, so we're gonna spend five extra days helping our teachers teach who are already certificated to teach, but we're gonna spend five extra days doing that, and our children who I think, when they graduated, I might have bad data, and you weren't the superintendent. So I'm not asking you to, it was about twenty-one percent were college or career-ready, I think that was the data when they graduated. So we're gonna spend, we're gonna give our teachers five more, I'd rather pay the teachers five more days and then have to do all this special stuff to do five more days of training and let our kids have one hundred and eighty days, because when you start taking the testing and all this other stuff out, the three weeks that, that we, a lot of teachers tell me that aren't very effective between the start of school and Labor Day, because they got kids filing in and out of their classes and catching up. And you were a teacher, Mr. Superintendent, and you still are a teacher, because you're teaching us new things. And, but I'd rather look some way where our kids go one hundred and eighty days, they need, if you look at our scores, they need more intervention than one hundred and eighty days. So I don't, I, I don't understand why we're working around, then we're gonna have to pay people to go do these special things that, that students that need it the most probably won't attend, and Mr. White, Dr. White, the extra fifteen minutes during the day, I know my attention span's about thirty minutes, so after eight hours of school, the other fifteen minutes are just lost. That's just, that's just numbers that we're adding up to justify this, but I'm for the children being in school for one hundred and eighty days. I'm for children being in school one hundred and ninety days, and if we have to pay professionals to be in school longer or adjust their salaries to do it, let's do that. But I, I, I don't like all this workaround, but if we were high-performing, yeah, one hundred and seventy-five days. Last thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I've also heard that things, and I, maybe Ms. Love alluded to it, maybe Kevin said it to me, but things like fall break, taking a week off vacation, Thanksgiving, if you consider our parents, which we're, we're about the kids and their parents, that's what we're supposed to be about.
Yes, sir.
That if you consider the kids and the parents, so, let's say I work, and I'm paid a living wage or less. We're doing a good job with most of our employees paying low wage, but, and so I gotta pay for childcare, or then I leave my child unsupervised, because if you work retail, which is a good example of something that's hourly, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of Thanksgiving are probably pretty busy days in the lead-up to Thanksgiving, and then I know that that Friday is very busy, not Thursday. But we're putting a burden on our parents that to have to worry about transportation, you know, we've got everything set for them. We, we pick up the children, we, if, if they want, they have breakfast, lunch, they have aftercare, they have a snack or a meal. So we kind of upset that, and they're out working two, three jobs in some cases, trying to make ends meet, and we're kind of upsetting it when we take all this extra vacation time, and, uh, and I hope it's coordinated with the municipal districts, because that even messes it up further, because we have people that work here who have kids in municipal districts. So anyway, I said enough.
So Mr. Orgul, you hit the nail on the head. Uh, we tried to, well, let me say this, in the past, we brought the calendar and we made a recommendation, then the board challenged us around listening to the public, engaging the public, engaging parents, engaging students, engaging teachers, principals, I can go on and on. So that's what the, the staff, we really intentionally did so with focus groups, with meetings after meeting, after meeting, after meeting, and not only that, again, we had an unscientific survey that we posted, um, um, online, and we had over sixteen thousand five parents really, um, responding, and we have the breakdown in numbers if, um, you need them. Uh, however, to talk about Thanksgiving break, it goes back to what we're trying to get at, um, student time on task. That Thanksgiving, uh, break weekend, uh, students, they were, uh, originally in school Monday and Tuesday during Thanksgiving. If you look at that, that's the poorest attendance time, um, in our school district, and many of our parents cried out big in us for an entire week for Thanksgiving. If you look at, uh, fall break and spring break, to get at your question, Mr. Orgul, we provided intercession periods for parents, uh, for the Monday through Thursday, so the students will be in school. So I challenged the board thinking around, this is a little different, it's a, it's a new way and a new, uh, I guess, approach for us doing the work. Our students will have one hundred and eighty-three days in school, uh, for the students that really need it the most, uh, and parents will have more opportunities during fall and spring break to have students in school probably without pay, uh, uh, for all day, because on fall and spring break, uh, you have a lot of latchkey students who, who's at home by themselves, so now they'll be engaged in school, um, fall break and spring break. On the half-days, I think Dr. Whitelaw answered, uh, answered the call uh, to actually have support for our students to receive tutoring and some other, uh, uh, services for our parents. So I wanna say our students, if you look at the total hours of them being in school with this calendar, they'll probably have more time in school than a traditional A calendar.
Ms. McKissick?
I just wanna say, first of all, I'm in support of calendar B. Um, it's, I received many emails. I've physically been pulled to the side by teachers and parents alike, and of course, plenty of students, including my own children. But my reasoning behind that of supporting it's because, um, yes, you know, we have a percentage of those who are not performing at whatever level, but let's not forget, you know, children are still children, and at a certain point, it's called like, you know, diminishing marginal return, and if we're getting the less, I believe in quality over quantity, and making the most of the time that we are there, and starting school on August fifth, it's brutal, it really is. And if, if you are trying to have any semblance of, you know, family time, or if you go, you know, road trip, we do a lot of road trips, um, and so, but just starting August fifth is so early, it's so hot, and just even psychologically, whether or not it's even any cooler, but come August twelfth, it's like, oh, we're already halfway through August, through that, the dog days of summer. So, um, and teachers are saying that they are working, you know, an extra thirty minutes a day without pay, when they're coming in fifteen minutes early, staying fifteen minutes late, uh, they're giving their all and then some, we all know that, and, um, I mean, to get a response of sixteen thousand, it's very rare when we get that level of response on anything, uh, in this district. So that's why, um, I, I'm okay with calendar B.
Madam Chair, may I? Um, with the PD, I, we heard something about PD, and let's talk about the quantity versus quality of, of professional development. Many of our teachers, uh, have to come on Saturdays, they receive stipends, uh, professional development is low, and we know what's gonna turn around schools, uh, is the quality of teachers inside the classrooms, and we must develop them professionally and give them quality PD. So Dr. Whitelaw, either Dr. Burke, can you?
So I'm gonna take other board member questions before we, and then they can, um, annotate. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, it's, it's clear the administration's position on calendar B, um, so, uh, I think you've, you've, uh, stated that a number of times, Mr. Superintendent. Uh, I, I wonder what parents, when you say that you, you talk to a number of parents, because as a parent, I want my kids to be in school as many days as possible. Uh, and I, I, I hear, I hear the teachers loud and clear, they need a break, uh, I heard the challenges that they're facing when it comes to having to work long days after PTA meetings and things of that nature. How did calen- so two questions, how did calendar B plus get before us, because from the meeting that I attended, it sounded as if that was a compromise uh, between administrations, uh, they articulated that administration, which would include the superintendent, uh, indicated that here is a counteroffer. Uh, we reduced the number of half-days, you still reduced the number of, of days that principal, I mean, that teachers were required to, uh, attend, so we still reduced the number of days. And so I thought it was a, a space that we could've met on, because the parents that I talked to were loud and clear on the challenge that they had with half-days. So as we track the data around uh, the first two days of Thanksgiving being low enrollment, how about the enrollment on those half-days that we're increasing? And, and so my question is, what, how do we, if you, if you all agreed that B was the calendar, and the teachers agreed that B was the calendar, and, and those, these parents, in your unscientific, uh, uh, research, why did we get a calendar B plus?
Can I ask the Madam Chair?
Yes.
So Board Member Woods, as you recall, over the years, we've always, uh, presented three calendars or have alternative calendars, uh, so that the board, um, if they so choose to go in a different direction, they can always, uh, direct staff and direct the superintendent to go back and take a hard look at other calendars. So what we've done, um, as we've done in the past, we present all three calendars to the public. And so the team, which is comprised of principals, teachers, parents, I think even Ms. Bibbs attended one particular meeting uh, with the calendar, to really develop the calendar, and to, to develop all three calendars as to make a recommendation, but have alternative calendars. So what we did, uh, after we, uh, go, and if you want us to share the process, we will, but, um, when we surveyed parents, uh, on our survey, over thirty-five percent, uh, identified as parents, uh, which is, uh, well over five thousand of the sixteen thousand, uh, responded. And so when I'm out, you know, parents, you know, quite giddy about calendar B. And what, um, the problem with B plus for us, again, we, we're talking about student attendance, that it's atrocious on, um, Thursday and Friday, and so that was the difference between B and B plus for us, and I think that's why the staff recommends B.
Okay, Madam Chair, just a quick follow-up, please, uh, so.
I, I was just about to acknowledge you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you. Uh, so could you, could you guys just articulate, whenever we get, uh, staff a chance to speak, like, what was the feedback you got, what was it that parents, particularly parents, liked about calendar B? Because I, I get why teachers like it, it makes a lot of sense, but what was it that parents are excited about as it comes to sending the kids to school fewer days and having to co- turn back around and pick them up for half-days? What, what gets them all giddy about that?
Well, I, I think what they liked, um, they know that it would be more days within a fall and a spring, uh, with the, um, intercession periods. Also, they like that it's aligned, uh, because many of our families, which, you know, some of our teachers and parents, which they are parents as well, they go on vacations, and many of their students in schools probably around the district, I mean, around, uh, the municipal districts, and they want a calendar that, that's aligned. And years ago, uh, we were challenged around, uh, aligning our calendars to the, uh, municipalities and vice versa. So we worked together as a team with the munis to develop calendars, uh, that's, that's aligned. Uh, so the parents are very excited about that. They were excited about the, the entire week of Thanksgiving, because parents, uh, tend to, uh, that, that we talked to, uh, go out of town and, and trips, and so that's another reason. But also, most important, again, during their fall and their spring break, the students, uh, can be in school learning, uh, uh, you know, doubling down in literacy, um, and in math. So that's, that's the, the rationale, Mr. Woods, for, uh, calendar B.
I have a few follow-up questions to that, but, um, Ms. Love, you had another question?
So I'll say this, um, I was on the line when we had the, uh, committee meeting to discuss the calendar, and I think I've spoken to you, Dr. Wright. The last time we voted on the calendar, uh, there was a great number of board members that stated, go out and get the community input. I think what I stated to you, uh, in the past was, I just felt like we should've did both and. Um, bring us the recommendation, these, this is the proposal that we have, uh, giving the board an opportunity or, you know, a month or two to look over it, and then telling us that we're also going to go and engage the community, and either add it to the committee meetings one or two times, um, so that we can not only receive that feedback, but also give feedback. And then what I'll say too is, as we're talking about half-days, and as we're talking about parents not bringing their children to school, um, because the attendance is low, and even if we're talking about parents going on vacation. So the parents in my district, especially with the city of Memphis having over forty-eight percent of our children living in poverty, my parents are not going on a five-day vacation. So when we talk about, you know, when we say that we, we've spoken to parents, what's the demographic breakdown, um, of the parents that, that we're talking to? So what I've heard is, I'm not gonna send my child to school, or I'm not gonna drop my child off at school, uh, on a half-day, because I work at Nike. So when I go to work, I can't leave at eleven or twelve o'clock to pick my child up, because I'm a temp employee. So I'm just gonna tell my child to stay at home, because I don't have anybody else to pick my child up. So, um, you know, I know we, we've had this conversation, but I just want us to make sure that when we talk about, um, the parents that we've spoken to, I would like to know, you know, moving forward, what's the actual demographic, um, of, of the parents that, that we've spoken to, um, you know, as it, as it relates to all of this? Because all parents are not taking a week-long vacation with their children.
Thank you, Ms. Love. What we can do, uh, staff or team, we can add, um, the next, for the next calendar year, can we add a demographic or something in for parents to select, but also during the spring and fall break, again, we're having, um, you know, school, we're, schools will be open for, um, intercession. The only difference now, uh, we're adding, uh, are those days during the lengthening, um, um, Thanksgiving break. But even on those half-days, just like those two-day week, uh, Ms. Love, they're not coming to school, uh, on the, on those two-day weeks. For instance, Thanksgiving and Monday and Tuesday, uh, traditionally, those days have been very, very, very low attendance after the staff and the schools do, uh, all kind of, uh, incentives in letting parents know and notifications. So, uh, it's problematic, but I, I wanna say I listened to all parents, uh, throughout Shelby County, from, uh, Whitehaven to Frazier to East Memphis to Hickory Hill to South Memphis, I can go on and on, anywhere in between. So I was downtown at a church Sunday, and several parents, um, so Madam Chair told me to be quiet, so I, I do so.
I'm, I'm, we'll have to wrap it up.
So Chair, let me, let me, let me say this, so this goes back to, uh, if we have a high number of children not coming to school on days where they're supposed to be in school, it's imperative for us to create a true plan of action of how we're going to communicate with those parents, the importance of coming to school when school is open.
Okay, so just a couple of comments, questions. I think if you're saying that parents and or teachers are saying they're, they're, they plan to be out of town for these weeks, the fall breaks and the spring breaks, and they wanna take advantage of them, who are the teachers then teaching these sessions during those weeks? So I, I would like to know if we have a commitment from a certain amount of teachers that are gonna be doing that for those weeks before I vote on a calendar that says we're gonna have eight half-days versus where we, I thought we landed after committee, which was five half-days. I think it is challenging for us to go to the community and say, we will offer a hybrid of services to keep your kids after the half-day. There isn't anything concrete in place yet, but we're gonna offer a hybrid of services. We're gonna go out to churches, we're gonna go use a community partner, and is a community partner someone that can cover all one hundred eighty of our schools or two hundred buildings? We have a community partner that has capacity to do that? So that every school would have the kind of aftercare you're talking about from the half-day period until six PM? We have one provider that has capacity to do that for all of our schools?
The provider that we talked to, and, um, I know we have RFP or RFQ that they have assured us that they could definitely provide that. that they could definitely provide that for our schools.
All schools.
All schools. And I can just tell you the provider that we are in conversation with. Okay.
So, so what, Ms. Ava, what, what tends to happen is the provider use existing staff within the school. And, you know, so, I mean, I'm, I'm hearing the board. If the board wants the staff to go back and look at another calendar and bring forth another recommendation, we'd be glad to do so.
So I think that board members, if you could provide the calendars that were discussed in the meeting, because I do think after that committee meeting, we talked about the one that had the five half-days versus eight. I don't know, I, I think that was more of the feel of where board members were landing. And so I think it is, it could, it provides a hardship to parents if we're talking about eight half-days. And you're already saying that the half-days that we do have and the two-day weeks that we do have are already low attendance. So then it seems like you're creating another barrier for parents. We're not creating it, making it easier. And I understand the teachers, you're needing to provide opportunities. So I think the staff should come back and say, "These are the amount of dollars we need to provide the PD." But it seems a, a pretty big hardship on parents to say, "We're adding in more half-days."
And Board Member Ava, I definitely, Chair Ava, I definitely wanted Dr. Burke to share as well about PD because we really talked about, to your point, we also talked to teachers about how can we definitely push the curriculum, push the work around PD, and make sure that we're providing quality education while they're in the classrooms? Because what we've noticed with teachers, that after a long day, they're not attending PD, even when we're offering PD after school. Also, we tried a couple of things in the fall and the spring. I definitely will have Dr. Burke to share as well, that we tried to have it in the same area and didn't get a good turnout then. We tried something different in the spring. So again, our whole purpose, as well as listening to parents and teachers, was really trying to make sure as well that we had teachers that were in front of students who provided a quality, rigorous education based on the training. And then I'll, I'll kick it over to him, because I know he wanted to say something as well about the work that we're doing around PD.
So Dr. Burke, in order, in the essence of time, I'm going to ask if you could put that in writing and send to the board to share about why the PD pieces really needed so that board members have an opportunity to review that. Moving on to seven point one zero.
Special course application.
Special course applications.
This is a request to approve special course applications. High schools want to offer courses to meet specific student needs or programs which do not already have a Tennessee Department of Education course code. And we must apply to the Tennessee Department of Ed for special course codes for SSSTEM and Humanities.
Seven point one one, network cabling and amount of two point five.
Yes. This is the access data. D N S I was awarded E-Rate Services, not exceed one point two five. And Oteka Technologies was awarded none E-Rate Services, not exceed one point two five. The district's question right to renew the second term of the master contract agreement.
Seven point one two, procurement USDA commodity process commercial equipment items for nineteen twenty and the amount of fourteen million one hundred fifty-two dollars.
This commodity allows the purchase of turkey, ham, meatballs, roasted potatoes, stuffed breakfast croissants, and beef steak burgers.
Seven point one three, Goodlett Elementary, Twenty-First Century Furniture. The amount of one point five million five, one point five five zero.
Yes. Twenty-First Century Furniture for Goodlett Elementary School. With a, with collaborative learning and promote greater student-to-faculty and student-to-student interaction, encourage students to be leaders of their education.
Superintendent, excuse me, we have to change the fund notation on this item from Fund Seven to Fund One. We've already made the change online, but we just need to call that out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's for Goodlett Elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
Seven point one four, HVAC Highland Oaks, two point eight five million. I think it's self-explanatory. Do you need to annotate, Superintendent?
That's it.
Okay. Seven point one five, HVAC Whitehaven, Damon Marcus Company, and amount of one point one million eighty-two dollars. Self-explanatory. Seven point one six, HVAC, HVAC piping Sheffield High School, Morgan and Thornburg, and the amount of one point six million fifty-three thousand eight hundred dollars. One point, seven point one seven, HVAC Sheffield Shrine Elementary School, Morgan and Thornburg Mechanical. Seven point one eight, HVAC Raleigh Bartlett Meadows Elementary School, Damon Marcus Company, amount of three hundred thousand six hundred, three hundred, six thousand one hundred and four dollars. Seven point one nine, HVAC Holmes Road Elementary, Morgan and Thornburg Mechanical, one point one million twenty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Seven point two zero, HVAC Booker T. Washington High School. Well, it should be Booker T. Washington School, Morgan and Thornburg, three point three million ninety-seven thousand. HVAC Grahamwood E.S. Elementary School, Martin and White Mechanical, and the amount of six hundred, sixty-four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars. So glad that we are spending our capital funds.
Yes.
Yes. Seven point two two, HVAC E.E. Jeter, K. Eight Bernhard, M.C.C.L.C., nine hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Seven point two three, authority to demolish Vance Middle School, which was talked about in facilities committee meeting.
Yes. Self-explanatory.
Okay. Seven point two four, Kirby High School, emergency purchases in the amount of three million two hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars.
So, so Madam Chair, we wanted, you know, in full transparency, you know, we had the issues at Kirby High back in the fall. So we wanted to bring all the services, facility renovations, furniture supplies that require for emergency relocation from students and facility upgrades to Kirby High School to the board.
Signal light, seven point two five, authority to surplus and demolish Graves Elementary School and Rain's Haven.
Yep.
Is there a reason why these are coming as, these two schools are coming as one item and Vance Middle School is a separate item?
The second set, we had to get your approval to surplus and demolish. Vance, we just needed your approval to demolish.
Mr. Woods?
Madam Chair, one of the comments or question that was posed to Chief Phelan and her team in Facilities Committee was the possibility of getting a bid on all possible demolitions and possibly getting a quote, knowing that there's a pipeline of demolition. And I know you indicated at that time that we only bring before the body what we have funding to support. Any conversation around that, or is that still, is this how we still should expect them? It seems like it's a great deal of additional work for you and your team and when we know there's a, a pipeline of, of facilities that we need to demolish. And maybe, Dr., I'm sorry.
So we, per that discussion and the approvals, we pushed out a bid that had multiple demolitions on it. So I'm just going to lean back for a second. So that, is it gone out yet? Once, it's in design right now? Four or five schools? Four, we did four buildings at, at a time?
Do they price it out, Mr. Superintendent, based on square footage? Is there, when you go and get a quote, do they go and look at the facility? How they make that determination? Because I guess what I'm suggesting is that, could we treat it like if we were purchasing commodity, that we pay a price per square foot? And then therefore, regardless of a facility comes up, you have a, someone is giving best price to take that facility down? Seems like it would definitely speed up the process and possibly lower costs if nothing else.
Yeah, that is how we do it. I think that's how we're doing it.
If that's a bad idea, I got lots of them.
Yeah? We do a walk?
Who's answering?
Director Sides, would you mind responding to the details of the specifics in the bid?
Yeah, there is, in the bid process, what we'll do is the, the contractors or the bidders will do a walkthrough of the facility. And then that will determine whether a specific site plan needs to be done to accommodate any hidden infrastructures, utilities, and stuff like that.
So that in itself is explanatory from the standpoint that if they continue to be one-off, that's, that's fine. But particularly, particularly, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Johnson, the fact that we know we have a pipeline, if funding is a reason that we can't bring all these to us in one fell swoop, then I would like to see us, in next year's budget, allocate dollars for all the facilities that we know we plan to bring down. And so we can then have them all bid at once. Thank you.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to say, I absolutely agree. This is a rare occasion, with Board Member Woods around it. I think in committee, we did actually, that's exactly what we said. I think, you know, we're in a situation now where we have a long list. And honestly, these buildings have been sitting there. And we keep getting hit every time we look up from the county government or from community around these buildings sitting there for this amount of time. And I think if there's a way for us to go ahead and handle that, we have got to do that. Even if we say, hey, this is our list, we present it to the county commission and say, "These are the dates in which it's going to happen." Because that then helps us have a better relationship around what our, our facility issues are.
I agree. Light, these light, lighted buildings just, you know, it, it does. If there's a way for us to mitigate that process, I would like for us to be forward-thinking in that. Seven point two six, SCS Emergency Management Classroom Preparedness, red books, two hundred thousand.
Yes. It's our goal to revise and update the information regarding emergency situations, unnatural or man-made, that can occur at any time or place.
Seven point two seven, contracts, endemia, endemia? Identity, endemia, identity and security, U.S.A. LLC, the amount of five hundred thousand.
Purposes to continue to provide fingerprint services, screen potential new employees, vendors, and volunteers.
And this is per state statute?
Yes.
Seven point two eight, March two thousand eighteen budget amendment?
Lynn Johnson.
Yes, so this is the budget amendment for March two thousand and nine. We're amending our budget, our entire budget by forty-two thousand dollars. There's two funds that we're amending the budget for, our general fund and our federal funds. For our general funds, we're realigning resources for our non-reoccurring and reoccurring Safe School Grant. And then for our federal funds, we're including the funds for the trauma-informed schools. That grant was forty-two thousand dollars. Today, you heard about the twelve thousand for our ten schools. But there's also thirty thousand that are, will be going to our charter partners, at least three of our charter schools. And then we're doing some realignment in terms of the Twenty-First Century as well.
Okay, signal lights. Moving on to seven point two nine, March two thousand nineteen capital improvement projects budget amendment.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. So for, for the March capital improvement amendment, we're decreasing, we are reallocating funds or adjusting the funds based on the, the spend of the budget. So we, we are decreasing our budget slightly by fifty-seven thousand. And that's more to have in line with our actual spending, not with the line in terms of the appropriated dollars. And we're doing reallocations to make sure that we have funds that go towards fire alarm systems, elevators. We even have some funds to, to support mechanicals, especially at Ridgeway, and to take into account additions and gems.
Okay. Signal light, seven point three zero, Raleigh-Egypt High School into middle, into middle and high school campuses.
Yes, to split the six twelve into two schools, Raleigh-Egypt Middle, six eight, Raleigh-Egypt High, nine twelve. Is to convert one large school situ, situated in two sites, two separate schools to increase resources and academic offerings. Currently, four and thirty-nine students in grade six eight and five hundred and eighty-nine students in grades nine twelve.
Ms. Love?
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm looking forward to the middle school, being a true middle school and the high school being a true high school. I would like to know the timeline for the principal selection, if one has been selected. And I would also just encourage the district to make sure that we communicate that with parents in a timely manner. Also, I know that I mentioned to you about Scholars Academy actually taking the Raleigh-Egypt name.
Yes.
Actually taking the sign off the school and taking it to the, I believe it, the school that they're operating in South Memphis.
Yes.
So I would like to know, because I know that they were not supposed to do that. So that's considered theft of property. But I would like to know, how do we go about getting our school name back?
Yes.
And putting it back on the building for, for our Raleigh-Egypt Middle School students?
Thank you, Ms. Love. To answer your first question, of course, we haven't started the selection process. For the principals, we're going to get board approval next week. And then shortly after, I know Dr. Burke will post a position, or Dr. Burke or either Dr. White love their, their post position. Second, with Scholars Academy, I did have the opportunity to meet with Dr. Griffin and some of the ASD charters with Scholars Academy. I can't think of the gentleman's name. He was there. He did agree with me about the Raleigh-Egypt Middle name. And we're just trying to figure out how to go about changing their name because it's a bit confusing. I know the news reported one day that Raleigh-Egypt Middle was out of school and they were talking about the Scholars Academy and not our Raleigh-Egypt Middle. So we're in the process of getting that changed.
Okay, so since we have approved, I mean, since we will approve, hopefully, the board will approve for Raleigh-Egypt Middle to become a standalone school again.
Yes.
I'm hoping that that process is taken care of within the next week. Because they took the sign, the name sign is gone. And like I said, that's, that's not supposed to take place. So whatever we can do to expedite this process, I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. John and Beth, can you guys get together and see what we can do?
So how did you, how, what is the ID? Who, what is the school ID associated with, if it's, if you're saying that they still have the Raleigh Middle name?
Dr. Burke or Mr. White?
When we merge the schools, what, who has the school ID?
Which school ID are you referring to?
Raleigh Middle. She's saying they also have that name.
They have, they're Raleigh-Egypt Scholars Academy or something to that effect. So the gentleman was James Dennis. He actually said that they actually have a, a mock-up of if they can switch their name to Scholars Academy, whatever the campus is. But the ID that's currently being used is Raleigh-Egypt High School, six through twelve. They're Scholars Academy with the Raleigh added to it.
Got it.
So now it would be two separate IDs for our schools.
In South Memphis. You are correct.
That's an oxymoron.
Well...
Seven point three one, merger of Hamilton Elementary and Hamilton Middle.
So yes, we're recommending merging Hamilton Elementary and Middle. Currently, Hamilton Elementary has three hundred sixty-five students with the facilities at fifty percent utilization. Hamilton Middle currently has two hundred twenty-seven students and the facility is at eighteen percent utilization. If approved, the consolidation will allow for addressing equities and programs, opportunities to increase enrollment, create more funding opportunities, increase resources and offerings, and will allow for increased academic rigorous course offers.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. I was jumping at the gun. So what I will say is this, of course, I've attended the community meetings around this K. Eight merger. The rationale makes sense to me, but I am more concerned around the building structure. I think when you look in Hamilton Elementary, just the cosmetics of the building, definitely, you can show investments have been made into it. But technically, I guess, the structure of Hamilton Middle is more sound according to the FCI number. But just because the building itself has strong walls does not necessarily make it inviting when you're talking about having elementary kids now in the building. So I would love to see some real numbers and conversations around, what are we planning on doing to make that building on the inside look inviting now becoming a pre-K. Eight location?
So Ms. Phelan, can we, in one, in your committee meeting, can we bring back why we recommend it, this particular building, and what upgrades we're going to do moving forward?
So Superintendent Ms. Phelan will provide some information prior to us meeting next week. So I don't think we have time to go to a committee.
I apologize.
In order for us to get that information. So if there's something that, and Ms. Bibbs, if there are some other specific... In order for us to get that information. So if there's something that, um and Ms. Bibbs, if there are some other specific questions, maybe you could provide that so that she can answer.
Okay.
It would be helpful to send to all Board members.
Okay, can do.
Ms. Love?
Question dealing with the FCI, um so is it, and let me, let me see. So if we have, if a school has a HVAC issue, would that make the FCI, because of the amount, that would actually make the FCI a higher number or a lower number?
Higher.
Okay.
Yeah. And so, so the FCI takes into consideration every, all the good, the main systems of the building, like HVAC roof, um you know, safety systems and things like that. And it's the cost to do, to cost of it versus the cost to replace the entire building.
Okay.
That's the percentage.
For Hamilton Elementary, how many uh pre-K students do they have at that school?
Okay.
Can we get back to you?
Yeah, we can get back with that.
So when, when we talk about, and it's not just for Hamilton Elementary, when we talk about elementary schools that have pre-K, uh I think it's important that we not only bring the K five numbers, but we also bring the pre-K numbers because we're not giving the true number of students who are actually in that school.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
Will do.
Seven point three two, um school year two thousand nineteen twenty rezonings. There's a list of schools that are um up for rezoning, South Wind Elementary to Highland Oaks, Highland Oaks Elementary to South Wind Elementary, Sheffield Elementary to Getwell Elementary, Germantown Elementary to Cordova Elementary, Cape Bon Middle to Mount Pisgah Middle School, Germantown Middle to Cordova Middle School, Germantown Middle to Highland Oaks Middle, White Station High School to Melrose, Germantown High School to South Wind High School.
So as you know, Madam Chair, banners are reviewed every year uh to ensure our learning environments provide the best conditions for student uh achievement. Um in these cases, multiple schools are zoned students who live closer to their home school. So we want to ensure that students are zoned to the closest neighborhood schools. Um enrollment becomes more stable than feeder patterns, district can expand courses, programs and other resources in the future. Uh if this is approved, our students can remain at their current school next year and through their exit grade and parents being responsible for providing transportation. Uh this will allow us to have stronger neighborhood schools and feeder patterns while addressing equities and programs and access in various schools.
I guess my question is, is this list, does it need to be brought as a bundle? Or are there some concerns that you were able to uncover in the community engagement meetings where there are some of these schools that make more sense than others?
Well, staff didn't bring or any, I know a Board Member or two had questions around um some of the, the rezonings. But um the, the parents that we talked to, uh from my understanding, once they realized that their students weren't gonna be impacted, they could remain at the school. Um and that the rising parents still can uh attend the school through choice transfer. Uh I think uh it quenched uh any questions or unreadiness that the parents that attended and me uh had prior to walking through the, the doors of that uh particular meeting, so.
Ms. Love?
So um what happened to the Douglas rezoning?
Yes, so what we did was with each of the rezonings, we had staff to go back out to look at the space within the buildings. Uh and after we did a uh second or third run, we found out that Douglas K eight couldn't uh absorb the students that, that was transitioning there. So we decided to take that off the list.
So a communication to parents will be sent out and?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for.
Yes.
Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Mr. Superintendent, first of all, let me uh commend you and your team for, I think you all did a, a good job of going out in the community, engaging uh parents, stakeholders, um and explaining the why uh with rezoning. Uh I, I do see this as a, a first courageous step as we start to take on uh the footprint work. Uh we think that uh rezoning uh is a courageous uh work. And so your team was definitely out there in the trenches uh making the case on behalf of the administration. Um I, I, I did not leave uh our community meetings feeling that uh everyone was pleased with the decision. Uh I stuck around for quite some time uh making the case on why we have to make these decisions and that this work happens every year. Um and so much like uh we heard advocacy around uh school calendars and doing what's best for educators, doing what's best for parents, uh particularly around the Germantown rezoning, uh when it comes to taking a school uh down to fifty-seven percent utilization, typically uh we, we hear from administrations on uh justification for school closure, where we have that type of utilization. Uh it, it starts to see numbers that say, why are we still operating this school? Uh so I do wanna thank you, uh Chief Parker, uh and the administration for engaging me around those particular uh rezoning efforts. So I, I have to ask, I know this is not a voting meeting, but I do wanna make my board colleagues aware that I plan to uh ask for a friendly amendment if my board members would indulge me and allow us to defer whatever, whatever happens uh with these decisions, that we defer implementation for a full year. Uh I think that gives your communication team an, an opportunity to really message this work uh and that it doesn't happen right away. And again, to be clear, for anybody, I'm not asking for a decision Superintendent to impact everybody else's own. And so if we wanna take these, to I think Chair Aven's point, if we wanna take them individually, uh you can do whatever. But what I'm asking for particularly uh for these schools in my district, that we defer implementation uh of that. And if, if, if board members are not comfortable taking them individually and we do them all together, I think it's a heavy lift uh doing this and implementing. And particularly when I'm gonna take my schools, and I think, uh to be, to be fair, in uh Board Member Coleman's district, I'm talking about a school that's gonna go down to fifty-seven percent utilization as opposed to uh in her rezoning, you have overcrowding at a school and you're going, and you're supporting uh schools in her district. And I'm, and I'm, to be clear, uh Board Member Coleman, I'm in full support uh of, of the recommendation that's before us on that. Uh what I'm asking for uh is that we, we think long and hard about how we take a school utilization to fifty-seven percent. And that's how it impacts my district. I'm starting to sound like Board Member Love talking about my district specifically. But, but I do wanna pause there Superintendent and say that, so to, to Board Chair's point, that if we have to take these à la carte, if we have to take these individually, I, I would support pilling them apart and voting on them individually. Uh because I'm gonna ask that my uh recommendation be deferred, if not altogether, uh be, be postponed. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Uh thank you, Board Member Woods, and thanks for the compliment. Uh we really appreciate it because we really try to engage the public. Uh but if the Board so chooses to take them individually, uh we will operate at the will of the Board.
Ms. Love?
So Superintendent, will you be bringing forth a uh rezoning recommendation for um Woodstock Middle and EE Jeter? Because I know that when we had the merger and the demerger, um I don't think we've addressed that, that area as it relates to the rezoning. And I know as a Board Member, I've stated, I've stated several times that uh I don't know if we've actually looked at that.
Well, I, I know we've, you know, cull through it's uh Ms. Love, and again, it goes to the overall um footprint planning of the entire district. Uh these rezonings are really low-hanging fruit. And um that's one where uh I think we need to look at maybe uh closing and building and some other recommendations from the team. However, uh that's a proposal that I know that the staff is working through. But we want a more comprehensive, robust conversation around just the, the, the entire uh footprint planning.
Okay, thank you for that. Um but I was speaking more so around when um the municipalities form their own school district. I know that parents were given an option. Um so when we talk about rezoning and we talk about neighborhood schools, have we looked to see how many students are actually supposed to be zoned to Woodstock? But they're uh, but you know, they're, they're allowed to attend EE Jeter, and this is not a general choice transfer. This is, you know, this is the way it was set up because we gave privilege, well, the former Board or whoever gave privilege to certain parents.
Madam Chair, that's not before us right now.
It's not, it's not, but we're talking about rezoning. So I'm asking, uh will you bring forth, will you look at that and bring that forth?
Yes.
Because we talk about neighborhood schools, I think we should look at all of our neighborhood schools.
So Ms. Love, I'm gonna recommend that we pull this item for uh Facilities Committee and that this is an item that could be added to that.
Pull what item?
I'm sorry, not pull, but add this as an item in our next Facilities Committee.
And, and also I have the staff to go back and, and look at specifically what Ms. Love is uh sharing. And so we can possibly, as uh Board Chair said, share it in a, a future meeting.
Seven point three three HVAC Oak Haven, uh Damon Marcus, self-explanatory. And then, I don't know how these HVACs got split up. Oh, we added these at the end, sorry. Seven point three four HVAC Maxine Smith Academy to WA's South Kerr.
Yes.
Okay. We're now moving on to Board Items, eight point one, Proposed Policies for Us Reading.
Ms. Stewart?
Good evening. We have three policies um tonight. The first one is three zero zero eight, Safe Drinking Water. This is a new policy based on statutory requirements for the district to test all of its um drinking water sources in school locations that were built prior to nineteen ninety-eight for lead contamination.
Okay. Um signal, next, signal lights, we're moving on to seven, uh eight point two.
We have two more policies.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. The, the second policy, four zero one seven, Suspension and Dismissal of Teachers. This is also based upon statutory requirements for the district to report to the State Board of Education whenever teachers are convicted of specific crimes. The third policy is five zero one three, Promotion and Retention. Um the proposed, the proposed revisions were discussed in the academic as well as the IBO committee meetings. And it incorporates language from the State Board Promotion and Retention Policy to ensure that students are, students considered for retention are identified by Fe- February the first. And it also incorporates guidance regarding the second grade retention proposal, which includes interventions.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Signal lights, eight point two, Resolution Approving SES Board Strategic allocations. Um those dollars are allocated to AB Hill, Cummings K eight, Jeter K eight and Alton Elementary, Highland Oaks Middle School, Germantown Elementary, Germantown High, Germantown Middle, South Wind High School. Okay, and moving on, eight point three. This is a amended procurement and contracts committee charter. Um I'm happy to say that Board Member Doris Coleman has agreed to take on this committee and we're so excited about that. Um yes, yes. Um and this committee uh provides, uh this is a charter from, the dates need to be adjusted. Um does it need to be adjusted from the time that she takes over to the end of the school year or just because her? Maybe it's a, just a question to go back and ask for the dates of the duration of.
Okay, so I can verify that with legal, but it was my understanding that since the charter had already been approved and we were just amending it to add Board Member Coleman as the chair, we didn't actually need to change the entire duration of the charter.
All right, thank you. Um and then to briefly summarize, if, uh to facilitate, this charter is to facilitate the Board's application to ensure effective Board governance and operations that are aligned to the Board and District strategic objectives. This committee is charged with the view of current Board policies, rules, regulations and procedures, development and implementation of programs to ensure its minority, women and disadvantaged in local businesses, very important. And the development of goals for that, uh for, for our MWBEs and then the review of communications for our MWBEs and local contracts. And thank you, Ms. Coleman. All right, if there are no other items before this Board, the meeting is adjourned.